I don't have a hammer, so I'll just call the meeting to order. Call the meeting to order and say welcome to the August 13 Frankfurt and Franklin County Planning Commission meeting. Glad that you all could make it. And we'll ask the secretary to call the roll, please.
Kate Bennett. David Boggs.
Here.
Patty Cross.
Here.
Keith Lee. Paul Looney. Tim Lusher.
Here.
Jim Nichol. Charles Stewart. Jim Terrell.
Here.
Russell Wright.
Here.
Sharon Jackson.
Here.
Form of seven.
You should have eight. Mr. Nichols, uh, uh, Mike is not on.
Oh, but he's here?
Yeah.
Right here, right, yeah, he's in the blue. Jim, let's give him a note. Hang on a second.
Well, he's got to look at the chat box. Okay.
Is he looking? Hey, Jim, can you?
Yeah.
Form of eight.
Form of eight. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the July 9 meeting, which was a electronic meeting as well. Did everybody get those, the minutes? Have a chance to take a look at them? You did? Cheryl entertain a motion to approve, amend, or change the minutes from July 9?
So moved.
Second.
Move properly second that the minutes from the July 9 meeting be approved as submitted. Questions on the motion? Questions on the motion? Seeing none, hearing none? All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise? Hearing none? Minutes are approved. Payment of bills. There's an amended, uh, bill submittal that you should have gotten in the, uh, in the mail in, on an email a couple of days ago. Then we want to entertain a motion to pay those bills, which is, uh, missed the legal fees, the secretarial fees, and advertising with the state journal. Their motion.
I'll make a motion.
It's their second.
Second.
Move properly second that bills be paid as amended. Discussion on the motion? Discussion on the motion? Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, seeing none? All in favor, please? I'm sorry. Russ?
No, no, I haven't.
Okay. Uh, all in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
Bills have been paid. Next item on the agenda would be, uh, reports of in-standing committee. None. Reports of special select committee. Special orders. And I have an, I have an inquiry of my legal counsel if I'm permitted here. This Logan, I, uh, need some guidance. I need to appoint a steering committee so that we can begin the comprehensive plan, update, and review. But I need to know whether or not I can appoint the steering committee outside of a regular meeting of the planning commission. Turn on your mic, please, sir. Where'd he go?
Right here, right here.
Okay. Oh, your microphone's still not on?
We can't.
Lower left hand.
I got it. I've been punching it. Yes, you, you can appoint them outside and all you have to do is then bring it back before another meeting to have the, the commission confirm the appointments that you made.
Okay. Okay. Then, under special orders, I'll, I'll say to you all that by the next meeting I will have appointed, I will appoint the steering committee and bring them to you all at the September meeting so we can get that process underway. One of the things that we talked about way back in December and January is looking at, hiring a consultant group to assist us in, uh, doing the comprehensive plan. I talked with Robert and I talked with Eric about that, uh, months ago and asked them to put a, a notation in the budget that they were submitting to fiscal court and to the city commission for the upcoming year, uh, to have money so that we can do a consultant for the comprehensive plan. So once I get the steering committee in place, then I think what our next step would be is to, uh, establish the requirements for issuing an RFP to do the, uh, consultant. So that's what we'll, you all have to look forward to at the September meeting at least. Are there staff items?
County has nothing.
Just the presentation of the audited financial statements. Mr. McLavick's here. If you'd like to ask him any questions briefly about, um, the audit, or he can just real briefly go over it if you like.
Uh, the tradition has been that Greg has done a short summary of this, the audit results, and then commissioners have, uh, then had an opportunity to ask questions. And, uh, if it's, if it's, okay, Mr. McLavick, if you don't mind, if you'll give us a quick thumbnail sketch and then we'll ask questions afterwards, I think that'll, that'll help us tremendously with.
Okay, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I have my video on, but I'm not sure why it's not coming up. But you all have the report in front of me, in front of you all, hopefully. Um, at the end of the, uh, this is June 30, 19, of course. You all had $20,000 in cash and you all had some accounts receivable from the city and county reimbursing the commission for bills that have been paid of $38,000. So your total assets are almost $60,000. Um, the next page is basically your income statement, page seven. And again, the years look very similar like they normally do. Uh, charges for services in 2019 fiscal year were almost $17,000. Uh, your contract labor under operating expenses, almost $29,000. Uh, member reimbursement, that's basically paying the members of the commission, almost $10,000. Professional fees, that includes, uh, includes the audit fee. Uh, you'll see the funding down at the bottom, non-operating revenue to city and county, $38,400, uh, $38,808. Change in net position, uh, almost $9,000 added to the prior net position of $50,000. Leaves your net position about $59,000, which ties to the front. And that's about it. Pretty, pretty similar like, like normal.
All right. Hearing none? Thank you, Greg.
Thank you all. Just make sure you approve it. That's the only thing that's necessary. Y'all have a good day. Stay safe and healthy.
All right. You heard the report. There are motions to accept the audit report for FY 18 and FY 19.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Move properly second.
Who seconded that?
Tim. Biggie is Tim.
Oh, okay. Thanks, Tim.
Moving properly second. Discussion on the motion? Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, seeing none? All in favor of the motion, please vote aye. Opposed likewise? Motion carries? And we're now at the meat of it, so under the public hearing, Madam Secretary, if you would, uh, read the first item?
Yes, the city, public hearing, the city of Frankfurt planning staff is requesting approval of a text amendment to Article 4.412 of the city of Frankfurt zoning ordinance to add churches as a permitted use within the special capital zoning district.
Uh, Mr. Logan, if you'd, uh, under public hearings, you have to qualify staff, so if you would do that, please, sir?
I will. Mr. Coakley needs to be sworn first.
Sorry about that. Mr. Coakley, do you swear and affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth? I hope truth is nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Coakley, state your name and position for the record, please.
Uh, Eric Coakley, Director of City of Frankfurt Planning and Community Development Department.
Eric, did you, in your capacity as Director of Planning and Community Development, prepare a recommendation to the, and report to the Franklin County Planning Commission with regard to an amendment to the special capital zoning district?
I did.
And as I have reviewed this, uh, the only change that you made with regard to the ordinance is that you added churches under permitted uses of 4.412. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And currently churches are in this district, but they are there, what, a legally non-conforming use?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, did you make this recommendation based upon your training, education, experience in the area of planning?
I did.
And do you have any other changes to your staff report?
I don't.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd move that the staff report be introduced into the record and turn over the witness for any questions.
Awarded. Uh, Eric, is there anything else that you would like to present to the commission about the text amendment?
Uh, I guess I can just, just briefly, as we mentioned, um, and we, we discussed this at zoning update committee, uh, just a week and a half ago or so, the, the churches were not listed as a permitted or conditional use in the special capital district. But we have multiple churches that are existing legal non-conformities in that district, um, some of which, uh, look like they're preparing to come to us with some projects to expand and things of that nature, which brings us to a problem when they're legally non-conforming uses because they can't do that. So it happens with many times when we bring a text amendment to the zoning update committee or the planning commission, um, that's usually, or I'll say many times, the reason we do that is because someone comes to us to plan for a project and in the process of them doing that, we find an issue they're going to have, um, and try to address that via appropriate amendments to the, to the text of the zoning ordinance. So that's what we've done in this case. We, we took it to zoning update committee and had some discussion about permitted use versus conditional use, um, and talked through the various, uh, processes that a church would have to go through with any physical changes, obviously still in the special capital district that is one of our historic districts, which has design guidelines, um, and requires exterior changes to structures, um, or property to go to the architectural review board. So that would remain, um, and then they would of course have to meet all their standard parking requirements for the zoning district and things of that nature. The, the zoning update committee, uh, ended up making a recommendation, uh, to process this on to the planning commission as a permitted use in that district, uh, largely because of our discussion that, um, while that district is largely residential with some other institutional, commercial, um, and multifamily residential uses in and around it, in addition to the Second Street corridor, which is largely commercial as well, um, that we, we thought the, the church use as a permitted use in this district rather than a conditional use would keep it simple for the, the folks that were, the churches that were already existing in the neighborhood. And we felt like the risks of, of that creating a conflict or perhaps, um, having some large number of churches attempt to move into otherwise residential structures, um, we, while we discussed that a bit, we, we kind of came to the conclusion, I believe, that, that because of the other requirements that would have to happen with change of use permits and parking requirements, um, that we were comfortable that we weren't creating, uh, a risk of promulgating churches attempting to, to, to end up in, uh, you know, single-family detached residential structures, especially, um, considering the most, South Frankfurt is already largely developed with not a lot of vacant land, um, on which place, you know, a new church might go, which, which could be appropriate anyway. Uh, that's about all I have to add. Uh, I'll take any other questions? Anybody's got?
Questions by commissioners?
Actually, Sharon, I do. Uh, so Eric, do I have a floor? Thank you. Uh, Eric, um, I do have some concerns about, uh, the choice of permit, or permitted use versus conditional use. And so I'd like a little bit of clarification from, you just explained it to some extent, but as I read this, um, while I agree that churches are an acceptable use in the historic districts, the way I understand the current designation, it's, it is there to protect the residential, residents and the historic integrity of the neighborhood. So as I read our current, um, like guidelines, by allowing it to be permitted use, it appears that it bypasses many of the restrictions, or not, not restrictions, but the oversight a conditional use would have, therefore, and I agree with you, there's limited, well, there may be limited, uh, inventory within South Frankfurt at this moment. This is city-county wide for any historic district. Uh, so I feel that we're opening up Pandora's box by removing those, straight, or those guideline, those additional guidelines specifically, um, where it comes to new commission, uh, new constructions, uh, design criteria, all of those are applied to conditional use, not permitted use. So how, I guess my question is why, I don't see a danger of putting it as a conditional use just to seal up, while we might, I think that there is a, um, an example currently of this, of a misuse, I think there could be in the future. We're just not seeing and I don't see a danger of putting it as a conditional use versus a permitted use.
So, so I appreciate the, the thought process about, uh, permitted versus conditional in terms of having an opportunity to review a use in case somebody attempts to do it in another location. I do want to correct, however, um, the, the comment about the design guidelines not being applied or, or ARB approval not being necessary for exterior changes, that's incorrect. This doesn't change that at all. It is, it is not true that only conditional uses have design guidelines applied to them. Now, true design, some of the conditional uses have specific criteria associated with that use, which is sort of different than, uh, what we refer to in the historic districts as our design guidelines, which are largely like architectural standards and things of that nature. So to be clear, you're, you're correct, um, and that there would be no special standards for churches as a use in this district, um, if that's a concern. But in terms of the design guidelines associated with the rest of Article 17 in the historic district, those would absolutely still apply, uh, whether it's a permitted use or a conditional use. Um, you know, beyond that, like I said, we, I appreciate the concern where you're coming from with, uh, you know, is it conditional or is it permitted? And what if somebody just buys a random house in South Frankfurt and somehow manages to, uh, meet parking requirements and things of that nature to have a, a small church in? Um, and I'll just, to be perfectly honest, I'll open, open it back up for the commission if they want to discuss that concern and a, and a revision to the proposal. Um, uh, and leave it at that for the moment. I think that answered some of that question.
Eric, uh, and I, I didn't think of this last week in the, of the committee meeting, but is it, this is kind of on extreme, but could a person say a church comes in and buys a house and establishes a church there? Could they next, go next door and tear a house down to create parking or an annex to the church? Or would that be something? Does that go into another set of problems of, of, that, that's not so easily done, I would take it. I mean, that would, that would.
Oh, so if they got a, got a house and then chose to buy another property adjacent with the house, um, the first thing they have to figure out before even get to the parking issue is pull in a building permit for a change of use for whatever interior changes they might make to the house.
Okay.
Um, and then there could be other building code required by the government because you're changing to a, uh, um, it's a different use for the building code.
It, it's much more complex. Yeah, yeah.
But, uh, secondarily to that question, if they needed in order to get parking, to buy adjacent property, demolish a structure and build a parking lot, that would have to go to ARB. And in the special capital districts, as in our other historic districts, obviously, approving demolitions in those districts is, is highly discouraged. That's, that's part of the reason we have those, uh, requirements to begin with. So the first answer to the question is they would absolutely have to go to a public meeting to get approval. And then secondly, they would be highly unlikely to get it.
Get approval. Okay. It's not, not an easy, right? Okay.
No, the, the standards are set up specifically to make it difficult to demolish contributing structures in the historic district intentionally.
Okay. Sure. Thanks. Thank you. Still can continue to voice my skepticism, but nothing is your, uh, determination, Eric, is that unfortunately, a history of demolishing things, um, we've lost half, uh, half a Broadway faculty for a parking lot adjacent to a church. So it is actually easier to have demolition than we may think it is. Um, and I, you know, it goes back to my concern is I think there are churches are appropriate uses in, uh, historic districts, but I also don't think that the safeguards to the residents of, in those historic districts are in place by just allowing as a permitted use without the additional safeguards.
Um, I take the, the pleasure of the commission. Um, Mr. Mr. Lusher suggested to make it a conditional use. Right now, we've got it as a permitted. I might also offer as a third suggestion that I think might assuage his concerns to some degree, um, if we want to sort of make changes on the fly, we could potentially make it a permitted use with a, uh, only in structures that, that were not built originally as single-family residences, uh, which would mean that it would be a permitted use if there was empty lot where somebody could appropriately construct one, or, um, it is now permitted use for those existing churches to at least operate, um, fairly and not as illegal, non-conforming, uh, use. So that the existing ones can enjoy their use and expand as appropriately if they have the room to do so and can meet the requirements. But will, will give us a safeguard on somebody buying, uh, a structure that was built as a, as a residential structure and attempting to convert it. That might be a third option. And if the commission wants to entertain any of those, those other options, other than the permitted use, I guess I'll, I'll leave it to you all to discuss.
Other questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Yeah. Bob?
Yes, thank you. Uh, Eric, would this mean that if it is changed at all that the code, the code status for health and safety things would need to be revised and reviewed in each one of the churches already in existence?
No. No, they're the, I mean, the existing churches would keep operating the way they are unless they did a renovation or an addition or something of that nature. Then as part of the, the building inspector's work, they would review, um, all of those kind of life safety issues as part of that construction, but you don't go in retroactively and just sort of ask to go into an older structure and, and do that unless they're, they're coming to you with a proposed activity of some sort.
Okay.
Other question? Not the, the, discuss again the idea of a permitted use with a foot, with a footnote, Eric.
Okay. Well, uh, and let me say again, I mean, I understand where, where Tim's coming from and I'm not principally opposed to making it a conditional use either, um, although I don't share quite the concern that, that he does. I appreciate it because we did consider that. So I just wanted to say that again. Um, and I wouldn't be wholeheartedly, you know, I, while we're, we're debating through this, which is a healthy discussion to have, I just want to repeat that, uh, I'm not, you know, wholeheartedly against making a conditional use if that's what the commission wants to do to keep everybody comfortable. Um, to your question, Mr. Jackson, we have, we have multiple uses, uh, which are listed as permitted uses with conditions placed upon them. Typically those conditions would be in our land use table and they might have a, a number and then you go to it and they would have a condition for that use. So you don't have to go to a board to get approval, but there might be other conditions. It might have to do with, uh, a particular use that might be allowed in a zoning district, but it has to be on an arterial street or something if it's a, if it's a, a use that generates traffic. For actually ironically, one of those, uh, that has that as a requirement, uh, in the zoning district is churches where they're allowed generally in most of the single-family districts as a permitted use, but oftentimes they'll have a condition that it has to be on, you know, a collector's street or larger so that you don't put it on some little side street and have, um, you know, traffic issues and things of that nature. So something you can do, um, where you're, I think the, the effort with those things is that you appreciate that there might be certain cases where they're not appropriate in an area, but you're comfortable enough that the use should be allowed, but with a certain couple of criteria, um, that, that, that we can then administratively treat it as a permitted use as long as they meet those criteria. It's kind of a middle ground between treating something as a conditional use where it might have requirements and also needing to go to that public, um, board meeting for that conditional use, uh, where the neighbors and things get notified and have an opportunity to speak, um, while, while at the same time applying some, some conditions that, that the commission may seem appropriate to avoid negative externalities.
Uh, Mr. Lusher, is that?
I think.
Does that address your, your concern?
Uh, to some extent, depending on what the conditions we place upon that permitted use. And I, I do realize we are trying to get the existing churches into compliance in reason to this. Um, I'm thinking in the future that we as commission don't set a sta, set a precedent that we can't dial back. Eric, I mean, if you could get us those conditions that you recommend, I think that would be acceptable. Um, and my, one of my biggest concerns was what you just brought up, that the adjacent landowners, the neighborhood themselves, residents of the neighborhoods do have inputs into changes, demolitions, existence, et cetera, um, uh, to those entities. So not applying that to, you know, the current churches, but, you know, any, any future involvement. So.
Okay. Um, yeah, if that's, if that's the commission's, uh, you know, request, we can certainly, uh, draw up some set of conditions. Uh, you know, I referenced one that, that might work to at least keep us out of those, you know, most of South Frankfurt is going to be the, you know, and the places that I think we're worried about them going are those residential structures. So I mean, I would, how do you feel about, uh, that being the condition? Um, I mean, are you thinking there, there's additional conditions that, that you would request?
Ms. Cross?
Yes.
Oh, I thought you were about to speak.
No. I'm about to write.
Okay. There's, there's one, I mean, there are a couple of things that we're trying to resolve here. One is that the existing churches be brought into compliance, but also that the current non-compliance position prevents those existing churches from being able to do modernizations and et cetera.
I might have an additional suggestion.
Yeah.
If it pleases the commission, I'm happy to, you know, if we went along with this part of the zoning ordinance text amendment, to make churches a permitted use, that then we can schedule a zoning update committee meeting, which I think we were planning on doing soon anyways, and certainly invite Mr. Lisher to participate. And in order to assuage his concerns, perhaps we would add as a conditional use, churches that, we could even make it a conditional use for churches that residential structures or churches that don't currently exist. And then set those standards to protect ourselves as a second step of this that would allow us to move forward with this step in a timely fashion was my only concern.
But if we do the text amendment this evening with a notation that we're going to put a special footnote there to explain it, does that allow us to address both issues in a timely manner? Because I mean, I know that there are a couple of churches in that area that are looking to make modifications or upgrades.
Right.
And the text amendment is really intended to allow them to do those upgrades within the guideline.
But wouldn't that footnote have to be more specific? I mean, not just an open-ended, you know, if you have a text amendment, you just can't, and we might do this in the future. I don't know if that would, that would be something you could do.
Yeah, I would like to just chime in. I am not in favor of footnotes. I think we need to make specific changes if we're going to and put specific conditions on it that are discussed in a public forum like this so that everybody knows what we're going to do and we don't go in saying we're making one change and we come out making five different ones.
Right. Well, I think based on this discussion and Ed's comments, how about we get another zoning update committee scheduled? I'll prepare a few options for us to consider, and we'll go back, discuss this based on these concerns, and then bring it back to the commission. That seems fair based on this level of discussion we've had.
Can we do that by just tabling this? Can it be ready by the next meeting, Eric?
I think we can do that. We'll get right on trying to schedule a meeting for the update committee, and that'll be our goal is to bring it back next month.
Tim, is there anything else you'd want to add to that?
No, no, I think that's a good compromise, and I appreciate it, Eric. I might just sit in on that meeting.
Perfect. When we send out the emails to get it scheduled, we'll include you.
Appreciate it, sir. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? Seeing none, then we'll entertain a motion to table until the September meeting.
So motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, likewise? Okay, motion carries. That mean that the text amendment is tabled until the September meeting, and we'll schedule a zoning ordinance update committee meeting in the meantime in order to dissolve the unresolved issue.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Madam Secretary, if you would, please call a no business the first hour. Is she there?
In accordance, yes, I am. In accordance, but it's under new business.
Is it? Okay.
Yes. In accordance with Article 5, Section 5.03 of the Franklin County Zoning Ordinance, Phil Gambrell, P.E. of Prism Engineering, is requesting approval of a development plan for Jiffy Loop service station to be constructed on Lot 3 as shown on plat of record and plat cabinet 1, Slide 79 in the office of the Franklin County Clerk. The property is more specifically identified as PVA map number 086-00-00-017.11. This is a county item.
Oh. Yeah.
All right, good evening. So it looks like Robert's pulled up this vicinity, or he's trying to pull it up on Google Earth, but I'll go ahead and start with my staff report. So the property is presently zoned CH Commercial Highway. It's on vacant land, and the proposed use is Jiffy Loop. Across from Versailles Road, it's got some more commercial use in CH zoning. To the south, it's got some CH zoning. To the east, it's got CG zoning. And behind it to the west is vacant agricultural land. So the reason why this is coming before the planning commission this evening was back in 2017 when the property was rezoned from AG to CH, the planning commission required that the development plans be brought before the full commission for review and consideration. The development plan was routed to the TRT for review, and the development plan included in the report closely resembles the, or resembles the plan that we are considering this evening. Staff is recommending that the development plan be approved, and I'll open it up for any questions.
One, one quick question. The narrative in the staff report implies that the plat is not final, and that there were two lots in there that were being looked at to be combined in order to provide the necessary acreage or square footage. Has that, am I reading that incorrectly, or?
It's not totally correct. It is presently two lots and being reconfigured into three total lots. And the plat has not yet been recorded, but it is currently being routed for signature and should be recorded in the next week. Sooner, perhaps.
Okay, so.
Is there gonna be, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead, Russ.
Is there gonna, you said, I'm maybe getting a little ahead of the game here, but a 25-foot is the access road? Is it gonna be like a service road that runs parallel to the highway? Will it go all the way up to about where, I guess Goodwill is the next?
Goodwill is the same, that frontage road that you use to access Goodwill and tractor supply and all of that. That's Arrowhead Court, and this project will receive an Arrowhead Court address and will basically be an extension of that access.
You'll be able to, you'll be able to go all the way down? Okay, okay, right. Yeah.
So where is the lot? Is it in the middle? Which one? Where is it gonna be?
Yeah, it's roughly in the middle, just above where that mouse is pointing.
It's adjacent, it's right next door to Zaxby's.
Okay, right there?
Yeah.
And you're gonna have the, the road is gonna go right along parallel to Versailles Road?
Yes, the frontage road will, basically, if you see the top there where tractor supply is, that little stub.
Yeah.
That's it, right there, and it'll continue southward.
No, I apologize, I misspoke. This will be a vacant lot. This is the site location.
That's correct. Yes, it'll be the, it'll be the middle of the, middle of it.
Yes, I apologize.
Okay.
So, God, do y'all know what the other two are gonna be?
Nothing is proposed at this time.
But in the meantime, Ben, will you bring the road all the way down to Goodwill, or will you stop it from Arrowhead, from the tractor supply store? Will that be extended only to the, where Jiffy Loop is, or will you bring it all the way down to continue frontage for that lot at this time? Would it be a, I mean, well, you're gonna have it accessed on both sides, aren't you? So you're gonna have the Arrowhead Court will be all the way from where the tractor supply store is, all the way to basically about where I think Goodwill has got their parking lot. Is that, is that right? Is that?
So, right now, in the street view image that you're looking at here on the screen, the Goodwill is under construction, I believe.
You're right.
So it'll, it basically will go from that location to, just to the left side of the screen, where the, right over here.
Right, right, okay.
So, Ben, you were not including that?
Yeah, I was, I was going from like, yeah, Zaxby's is what I meant to say, not Goodwill's on up this side, up near tractor supply, but right. So it's gonna go all the way from there to, but it's all gonna be completed. You're gonna, you're gonna have a road in front of those lots, even though they're undeveloped at this point in time, right, to have access to, am I, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Then will the current ingress, I'm sorry, Jim, go ahead.
Yeah, ingress and egress will come via Arrowhead Court to serve Jiffy Loop.
Okay. So the currents, what we're looking at currently on the screen, will that go away? That looks like a gravel road leading.
I think what, I think it's already changed. I think the state has already put in a more commercial type of entrance, but it's just a stub at this point.
See, does the access road go all the way over to Zaxby's? Or how far does access road go over?
It'll terminate, it'll terminate prior to Zaxby's.
Okay, so there's, so you can't, so you just get on access road from that one area? You can't go all the way down to Zaxby's and get on there, right?
Yeah, I think that's what I was asking earlier. Yeah, you're not gonna be able to have a, Zaxby's to Goodwill connection there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's correct.
And on the, on the plat, you've got, so Arrowhead Court, and then you got, I guess, the dumpster there in the back, detention basin there in the front, and then in the back, right? On the plat?
On the development plan?
Yeah.
Uh, yes, there are two, there's actually gonna be two detention areas. One is gonna be in between the front of this development, in between the front of this development and Arrowhead Court, and then there's another detention basin and towards the rear.
Yeah. And that's a dumpster right next to detention basin there in the back, right?
Yes, to the left. Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Now, you know, Ben, the photograph that you have on the handout, it does look like you all have a square, it's been outlined, it looked like it includes that lot all the way up to, up to Zaxby's.
So there is a, there is a vacant lot in between this development and Zaxby's.
Okay, right, okay. So, so we're good, okay.
Yeah, so to clarify, the plat that was referred to in the staff report would be a subdivision of this larger tract so that only Jiffy Loop consumes a smaller portion. So, so Jiffy Loop is currently on a lot that it's so large that you could actually create another one. So that's the plat being reviewed to subdivide to create a new lot.
It looks like that there's work, there's no, that third lot next to Zaxby's vacant, and Jiffy Loop's the middle, but it looks like there's a lot of work going on the one next to tractor supply? Are they already starting to get that?
This aerial image is a year or two, a couple of years old, perhaps. So that's construction you see there is Goodwill, and that project is completed.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I have probably just a technical question. If, if, if the plat is not final, how do we know what size development we would be acting on here?
The proposed lot size for when this plat does in fact get recorded, this lot will be 0.873 acres in size.
So, so, and I guess this is a Ed Logan question. So if we take an action on this request this evening, and the 0.8373 acres is the point of reference in any action we take, can that plat then be recorded with that lot being anything other than 0.873 acres?
Mr. Chairman, a plat can be, a plat can be recorded saying anything, but it will be a plat that has not been approved. And if we limit the approval tonight to .71 or .75 or whatever it is, that is the only approval they have. And ultimately, they would have to prepare a plat that would conform to our approval.
Can they get a construction permit if the plat, or the development plan that was not approved by us?
No, I mean, they have to have approval to get a construction permit. I don't believe Mr. Hewitt's gonna give him a permit for 10 other buildings out there when he knows we've only approved this one.
Yeah. I was more concerned that the lot might get smaller than what is being presented.
We are approving a specific amount, and if it gets smaller, that's just as erroneous as if it gets bigger, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
You all were talking that this picture is a couple of years old, and the Goodwill, how far does the Goodwill building go over to where those two, looks like tractors are? How far does the Goodwill, and then the three lots? So how far does the Goodwill lot go over? Just to the, to the right of those two vehicles?
If you'll give me a moment, I'll log into my computer downtown and pull the plat up if you'd like to see it.
Okay. I'm just wondering, you know, exactly those three lots and how much the Goodwill, what we're looking at.
So also, just to make a point about the lot size here, on the development plan that's provided in the report, that image, the lines that roughly, basically, you can see the lot lines on that development plan, and the two adjacent vacant lots are kind of shown in there too, along the frontage road. Just to give you an idea of the size of the lot. The Jiffy Loop will be developing almost the entire parcel, except for the basins.
And are the, the building itself, is that, well, it looks like it's kind of divided. Is that all one building? It kind of looks like, is that divided in the middle?
It'll be one building, but it'll have multiple service bays within it.
Okay.
Okay. So, Robert, are you gonna put up a new picture, or was the question about Goodwill satisfied?
Yes, sir, I'm working on pulling up the plat.
Okay.
Two more seconds, I'll have it pulled in. Hey. All right, I'm sharing my screen again, can everyone see it?
Yeah.
So, uh, Mr. Stewart asked about the size of the Goodwill lot. And so, uh, so, sorry, this laptop runs a hair slow. Okay, so this is the location of the existing Tractor Supply business. Uh, and this is the state-approved entrance from Versailles Road that goes straight into the Tractor Supply parking lot. This plat created these two lots and the, and the access easement, okay? And then this is the Goodwill lot. Um, and then, um, this is the lot, uh, uh, let's see, lot number two, and then the, uh, which is vacant. And then this lot number three, and Ben, correct me if I'm wrong, this is the larger lot that's proposed to be subdivided, so that, uh, Jiffy Lube would locate here, and the remainder would be right next to Zaxby's, is that correct?
I believe both lot two and three are being reconfigured from two total lots to three.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Stewart, the, the width of lot one, where Goodwill is, is 185 feet, uh, no, excuse me. 100, yeah, the front is, uh, yeah, 186 along, uh, the frontage.
And then lot two and three are div, divided into those three we're looking at?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So I hope that helps. It can be confusing.
Thank you.
So if the, if the planning commission were to, uh, recommend appro, or to grant approval of this development plan, staff would obviously request that it be contingent upon successful, recording of the plat that we've discussed this evening.
Okay, that, that, that gives us some comfort. Any other questions? If not, uh, Cheryl entertained a motion with regard to the request of Mr. Gambrell.
And he is here, uh, in this meeting, if you all have any questions for him specifically, by the way.
Oh, yeah, I forgot. The applicant is, is supposed to make a presentation.
Uh, I am here, and, uh, obviously, there's been a lot of discussion, and, um,
Sir, you, you, for the record, since we, you know, we're all in different locations, you need to state your name for the record, and address, and et cetera, before you begin to, to speak.
All right, uh, my name is Phil Gambrell, uh, Principal of Prism Engineering in Louisville, Kentucky. Uh, address is 2309 Waterson Trail, 40299.
Okay, you may begin, please.
All right, uh, basically, I was just gonna state that, uh, anything that I had to present has already been discussed and gone over by, uh, Ben. And, uh, so, in, in, in light of, uh, the time that it's getting to keep holding everyone, uh, I'll forego my presentation and just answer any technical questions anyone may have.
Well, so you, you, you're saying that you agree with the staff report?
Yes, sir, I do.
And you agree with the addition to the staff report that there be a condition placed on any approvals of the request that the final plat reflect the conversation of this evening's meeting?
Yes, sir, I do.
Other question? There being none, Cheryl entertained a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to, uh, approve the development plan for Jiffy Lube Service Station to be constructed on lot three, as shown on the plat, and recorded in, uh, as a lot L, slide 79, in the office of the Franklin County Clerk's Office.
Motion taken.
Been moved and properly seconded, that the request, uh, for the development plan, for the, the, uh, construction of Jiffy Lube, uh, be approved? Properly seconded, discussion on the motion.
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Cross.
Does our motion include the condition that we just, um, mentioned about the final plat reflecting our discussion?
Jim, I'm presuming so, but Jim?
I would, we can include that, but I think legal counsel cleared that up for us, that nothing could be done, uh, after it was, uh, after it was described that way. I would have to issue it anyway, so, but yeah, we can, we can add that to it.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Cross?
Yes.
You, you're good.
I'm good.
Okay. Any further discussion? There being none, Madam Secretary, would you call the road?
Mr. Boggs?
Yes.
Ms. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Lesher?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Terrell?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Chairman Jackson?
Yeah.
Unanimous?
Motion carries, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, Madam Secretary, would you call the next item on the agenda?
In accordance with Article One, Section 1.08 of the Franklin County zoning ordinance, DG Frankfurt LLC, Care Charles E. Jones is requesting a waiver, section 4.326A of the Franklin County zoning ordinance, requiring that access shall be from a frontage road. The property is located at 2865 Louisville Road, and is more particularly described as PBA map number 036000001.01. This is a county item.
All right, so, uh, the subject property is currently zoned CG general commercial. Uh, it is located on a 5.289 acre parcel of land. Uh, on the other side of Louisville Road to the north is some residential use and zoning. Uh, to the south is some agricultural use, and it's also zoned RR rural residential. To the east is Gilbert's Furniture, formerly Gilbert's Furniture. It's zoned CG, and to the west is RR rural residential zoning. Back in 1997, when the subject property was rezoned to commercial, uh, a motion was placed that the, uh, development shall have, uh, or be, shall be accessed via frontage road. Um, but i- in this instance, the, the way the current development plan is laid out, a frontage road doesn't really make sense, due to the idea that the frontage road, the goal of the frontage road, I should say, would be to minimize curb cuts, uh, to US 60 Louisville Road. Um, but the current proposed development, they only have one cut into US 60 with the main entrance going straight into the parking area for the Dollar General. Uh, so a frontage road would require a minimum of two entrances, thereby not accomplishing, uh, its goal to reduce curb cuts. So, uh, this development plan has been routed to the TRT for review. Uh, everybody is on board, um, no, no issues there. And then, uh, staff is recommending that this be approved.
Ben, would you mind, uh, identifying, um, the road that leads to Bridgeport and its purpose, please?
Yes, of course. So, uh, as a part of the technical review process, uh, the fire department had some concerns about hydrant access. The hydrant is located towards the rear of the property. So in order to allow ease of access for the fire department in case of emergency, that rear entrance is just for that, emergency purposes only. It'll be chained off and will not allow access for the public. The only purpose it will serve is in the event of a fire. Otherwise, the access to the lot shall be from Louisville Road.
About what would it be? Russell, where's I view of a lot, uh, gives access to above? Where, where, where would, where would it be, the access? Um, is that?
Uh, so, uh, if you look on the, uh, report, uh, at the last page before, where it said, where right above with the staff approval, uh, it does depict the site layout, and it depicts parking com, or entrance in the parking area, uh, if you're looking at that plan.
That was my question too. So where, so that's the top, where the, uh, the main, that's along Louisville Road, right? Where it, uh, flares out like that, or that's where Louisville Road, right?
Yeah, that's the, yes, sir, that's the apron for the entrance.
Okay. And then the, that small road goes back the, towards, oh, that's Bridgeport, right?
The smaller. That'll be for emergency purposes only.
Okay.
Ben, this is Ed Logan. Uh, unfortunately, in 97, I remember an extremely protracted and long hearing about this property. And the one major concern of a lot of people out there was maintaining the, uh, growth and trees that were along the property line, and also having sufficient green space and setbacks for anything that was developed there. Has anyone had any comments about this?
The frontage road, uh, in opposition?
Yes, have you had any opposition with regard to what's happening on, on what's being requested?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. And if I could interject, if you don't mind, um, I did speak with an adjacent property owner, specific to the concerns from the 97 hearing, zone change concerning landscaping. Um, and so what I'm doing at the moment, I'm pulling up the revised landscape plan, um, and I took the opportunity to print out a large version of this plan and provide it to the adjacent owner. So this plan, uh, notes two separate things. Uh, the existing tree line will be preserved and maintained, and you can see there's no encroachment into it. Uh, this squiggly line represents the tree canopy.
Robert, we're still looking at the Google Earth image.
Yeah.
Uh, let's see.
Well, Robert, the only thing I was concerned about is I remember spending quite a few hours one evening at a public hearing, listening to adjacent landowners about this. So that's why I was saying, everybody has no problems with regard to leaving the landscaping the way it was approved initially, and with this change with the road frontage.
Bear with me, it looks like the screen share stopped. I wanna, I'd like to get back to the drawing.
We're here, hold on, Robert, you want me to pull it up?
Well, while you all are doing that, uh, there are two questions. That entrance that's, uh, uh, right there on the backs, on Bridgeport Road, you say would only be an emergency access point. I, I, uh, probably did something I shouldn't do, but I drove out by the site, 'cause I wanted to see it, and it doesn't look like it's shut off at all. It, anybody who wishes to access it from Bridgeport Road can access it. And there's, there appear to be infrastructure, uh, grading and et cetera, taking place out there. And, uh, one can actually use that emergency entrance, turn left right there, and go on to the subject property. I mean, have you all looked at that, and, and, and?
So I believe they are still working on grading the site. I've been out there as well, um, and I believe what you're talking about was the existing gravel entrance that was already there. And I think that some of the construction crew has been utilizing it as a parking area, perhaps. But once this development is complete, uh, there will be a gate installed, uh, on both sides, on the parking side and on the Bridgeport side, to prevent the public from utilizing this entrance.
And have you, you, you made any determinations about the fact that you have an entrance into the old Gilbert Furniture, uh, facility? They're off of US 60? And then how many feet down the road are you gonna go? How many yards down the road are you gonna go before you do the next entrance, uh, where you, you've got two-way traffic there and no stoplight? So the two access roads will have what kind of distance between?
Are you talking about the access road, the primary access for this development?
Well, the, 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 the proposed development, but right now, there is an access road to Gilbert's that's off 60. And then you're saying that there's going to be another access road that goes into the Dollar General off of 60, right?
Uh, no, the only access road is in the back of this property to Bridgeport Road. The, and there's one entrance at the front of Louisville Road that will provide part of, access to the parking of this proposed development.
So, so that I'm clear, that means that the access to the parking for Dollar General is going to be the same access that currently exists for, uh, Gilbert's off of US 60?
No, it'll, it'll receive its own standalone access point.
Then I'm asking you, what is the distance between the access road to Gilbert's that currently exists off of 60? And the new access road that will be going into Dollar General? That will be going into Dollar General?
Robert, could you pull up the Google Earth that you had earlier, there's a measuring tool on there, could we measure that distance?
Sure.
I don't know the answer to your question off the top of my head, Mr. Jackson, that's why we're gonna, we'll check that for you, but, uh? The state has approved encroachment permits for this entrance, for this proposed development currently, so the state has already approved the entrance.
Yeah, I, I understand that part of it, but the state has a record? Of having access roads that are? Very, very, very close? Together. I, I remember, I remember New Circle Road in Lexington? As the prime example where every 10 feet? You have an access road? Or an access point off of New Circle into some business? Frankfurt wants to be? A better steward? Of transportation arteries than?
So this lot is? Sorry to interrupt, uh, this lot is 5.289 acres? And it will only have one entrance off of Louisville Road? If, if you all were to not to grant this waiver, would potentially increase the number of entrances?
Okay, but what's the distance?
Mi-
I go back to my original question. What is the distance?
Mr. Chairman, if I may? Charlie Jones here. It's 450 feet, I believe, sir.
Okay. That, that seems reasonable, okay. You found a, a picture, Robert?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Can you all see the aerial image?
I can.
So, so this is Gilbert's Furniture. There's their main entrance here, and then they have a, a secondary entrance. Um, and then the proposed entrance for Dollar Generals is in dislocation.
Okay.
Mr. Jones, uh? Is familiar with the, the? I guess the, the lease or purchase agreement? That Dollar General has with this tract of land from the Gilbert's? Um, and how long that lease is and whatever conditions may be applicable to that? So if I use the, the measure tool? Well, it's measuring in meters, so I apologize, let me, let me change it out here. Now, this is a rough approximation, but we're looking at about 550 feet?
Okay.
Best case scenario. I, from my site visits, this is where I believe the entrance is.
I think that's pretty close, yes.
Okay, so we're talking-
Where's the access road gonna be, where that gravel is? To Bridgeport? Where that gravel is, right there?
Uh, yes, sir, I believe that will be the location.
Okay.
Now, they will install a brand-new culvert there? And, and the reason that the? Fire Department requested the driveway? Is because there is a, a water main along Bridgeport Road? And the hydrant is-
It's right at the corner of that drive.
Yeah. And so, um, uh? This is the, the most logical place for the fire department to connect their hose and then pull their apparatus up to the parking lot and then be able to fight the fire from there. So, that was a request of the fire department, as Mr. Judah indicated.
Are they, there's a lot of land that goes where that lot goes down to the left? Are they planning to put another? Potential lot down the road to subdivide that further? It looks like they got more land to the left where the building is, are they planning to subdivide that down the road?
Well, the building will be here, and that the extra land would be here.
Right, and that corner? To the left, going down, it looks like they have a lot more land? You know, kind of down towards Bridgeport, yeah, that area?
Oh.
Would they?
That'll be towards their back of the, of the proposed development? So that'll be roughly the back of the Dollar General, isn't that, that bottom portion there? And then there, uh, just to the left of that, there's a tree line, that's, the, the property line is roughly along that tree line? And those trees will remain in place.
So they're just planning to have just the Dollar General on that lot, no other? Uh, buildings on there, correct?
That's correct, Dollar General has a land lease on the property and no other further developments are proposed.
And I, I believe that Mr. Jones could address the commission further? Uh, relating to the land lease?
Other question?
Uh, one question on the landscaping plan? Can you pull that back up with, uh, they've got the trees? Uh? Can you all show that, that landscaping plan?
Yes, sir, give me just one second.
I got it, there, can you see it?
Not yet.
Oh, no, not yet.
But the trees, are the trees going to sort of, uh, buffer between? The property in question and that house right across Bridgeport Road?
Say that again?
Um, the house across Bridgeport? Road? Is, looks to be fairly in line with that access road?
Yeah, it does look like it's gonna screen the Dollar General from that house.
That was my question.
Yeah, so the landscaping will be along the backside of the property there, and there's already natural buffer on the left-hand side, can you see my screen now?
Right.
Yes.
Okay, good, so, yeah, on the left-hand side, there's an existing buffer? And then the, uh, proposed landscape plan has a row of trees? Along the rear of the property there.
And those are all evergreen?
Yes.
Okay. And is that, uh, on the front part of the parking lot? Are those shrubs? Is that what, that, that screen off the front of the parking lot? And then there are trees, uh, right there at each of the corners, is that right? Are those kind of like shrubs, kind of screening it off of Louisville Road?
You are correct.
Mm-hmm. Yep, these are shrubs and those are, yeah, trees right there.
Right there in the corners, okay.
Okay. Um?
Other question?
I'm, I'm curious? I didn't see a reference to how big those trees are gonna start out like? The ones? Along, um? Bridgeport.
Maybe Mr. Jones can, will, uh? Enlighten us.
Okay, here's the landscape table.
Oops, where'd it go?
So, so, uh, the, the trees shown parallel to Bridgeport are PS? And there's 31 of them, they're eastern white pines? They will be five to six feet in height at the time of planting?
So they're-
Evergreen.
There'll be a decent, um? Buffer to start out with, too.
Start, right.
Yes, that is? That is the intent.
Okay.
And then, just quickly back to? The other question about the landscaping in the front? The, the trees are a QP? Which makes them? Willow oaks? Okay, and they'll be in two-gallon containers, so, uh? I don't, don't know what the, the height of that will be, I would've guessed at least eight feet? Six to eight feet? And then, uh, looks like we're gonna have? Boxwood and viburnum? Here, uh, up against Louisville Road? Yeah, the, 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 these are the boxwoods? And then it looks like, uh? There'd be viburnum, um? Sprinkled amongst those.
Uh, and what's on the access road, what is that, stone? What is that, uh? Looks like kind of, on the access road going back to Bridgeport? What is that, uh? Looks like kind of a stone treatment or something?
Yes, that would just be a stone base.
Okay.
Okay.
So there'd be a, a, the chain? Uh, or the, the blockage will be at this location as well as this location? Um? One other point of note, if I could? Just for? For your information, the engineer did a very good job on this, they, they answered all the? The questions and concerns that we had. Um, they've also? This image here shows the location, there's no public sewer out there, so this shows location of their? Or, uh? Septic tank and lateral field? And then they've also provided a photometric diagram? For their exterior lighting? Um? To show how it will? Display in the evening, so it gives, shows you your reference to Louisville Road? And so you can see that, that, uh, lighting to the south along Bridgeport Road is minimized greatly? And then to the residential property to the left, it's minimized? Uh, almost entirely, so? Um, we appreciate them providing that information to us, and it's very helpful.
So they're directing all the lighting down, so it won't be lighting up the? Other area?
That is correct, down towards their parking lot.
Okay.
Other question? Not? Thank you, Mr. Judah, and, uh, Robert? Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir.
If, uh? You don't mind? If you'll give us the applicant summary, please, sir?
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, members, Charlie Jones, uh, here on behalf of the, uh, applicant? Uh, we have filed this, uh? Request to, uh, alleviate the requirement of a frontage road? Um, as staff has already alluded to, uh, part of the frontage road is to? Uh, help alleviate additional curb cuts onto the roadway, and? This would, uh? With? Removing the frontage road, we would just still have the one access point? There is no additional development plan for this five acres? Obviously, a frontage road is more beneficial, just as you were talking about in the previous application? Down Arrowhead would serve multiple properties? Uh, this frontage road is only gonna serve this one property? Uh, there is no other development or other outlots there that it would serve? Uh, so the benefit of frontage road is lessened because it, it's only for the one property? I would note also that the, uh? If we were to require to put in the frontage road? It would have the effect of pushing the development back towards? Bridgeport Road? Uh, closer to some residences back there? And I think that would be a detriment to them? Uh, so I think that, uh, without the frontage road, it allows us to put the location where it is? And lessen the impact of, uh, residents along Bridgeport Road? Uh, as Mr. Logan, uh, alluded to? Um? That's all we really have, we agree with staff report and certainly can answer any questions you have.
Commissioners have questions? Mr. Logan, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Okay. If there are no questions, uh? We're doing a waiver? Does this one require us to have findings of fact?
Believe it does.
Mr. Chairman, you may make the findings combined with the motion if you wish, I think these are pretty simple.
Okay? The sta- the staff, uh, recommendation is, is on page four? Of the second pages? And the chair will, uh? Entertain a motion?
Still waiting on a motion, Chairman Jackson?
Sir, I need a, I need a- You can read the one on, uh, page four.
I'd like to make a motion that, um? We approve the sta- the staff recommendation, uh, for the applicant's request to waive the? Frontage road allowed direct access to the site.
Okay.
Second.
Move properly second, that the applicant's request for a waiver? Uh, of, uh, the frontage road? Uh? Is there a discussion on the motion? Discussion on the motion? Mr. Logan, is that sufficient motion?
Yes, sir.
All right. Madam Secretary, call the road.
Mr. Boggs?
Yes.
Ms. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Lusher?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Terrell?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Chairman Jackson?
Yeah.
Unanimous.
Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir.
You have been successful, congratulations.
I appreciate it, thank you all very much. Thank you.
There any other business to come before the permission?
Staff has nothing.
Uh? Chair, entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Second, non-debatable. Good night, you all. I've enjoyed it.
Thank you all.
Thank you.